I recall the Parks Recreation and Community Services Commission meeting to order for Thursday, February twenty seven, twenty twenty five at five thirty seven P. M. Recording Secretary, can you please conduct the roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Diaz?
Yeah.
Commissioner Jogway?
Here.
Commissioner Nelson?
Here.
Commissioner Reyes?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Wu?
Yeah.
Commissioner or Vice Chair, Senator Torres?
Here.
And Representative Herrer?
Here.
Records show you have six members present and we have a four.
Thank you so much for calling us, Secretary. Now it's time for the legislative agents. Ready, begin. I am Elijah Nidius, Deputy Director of the United States of America and to the Republic for Richard Chan, one nation, one ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. An item that our Executive Director would like to move to have a presentation for Lightning Youth Academy, do we have a motion for to add it? To add it to the agenda for a presentation by Lightning Youth Academy, do you have a motion for making the commissioners to add this item to the agenda? Commissioner Nelson, followed by Commissioner Wu?
Motion by Commissioner Nelson and seconded by Commissioner Wu to add the presentation onto the agenda. I will now conduct a roll call vote. Commissioner Diaz?
Yes.
Commissioner Jogway?
Yes.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Reyes? Commissioner Wu?
Yeah.
Vice Chair Torres?
Yes.
And Chairperson Herrer?
Yes.
Coach?
Six eyes, zero nays, that much we cares.
Yes, sir. Front and center. Let them know who you are, why you're here, and all the exciting things you guys have been doing.
Thank you very much. Hi, everybody. I am Poset Chalula. I'm Dr. Poset Chalula. And I'm actually, I just wanted to start off, I want to say thank you to everybody for all the work that you guys are doing. I'm actually a product of the Parks and Recreation. I grew up at Jerome Center. I don't mind saying this in public, I almost drowned at that airport. Every summer, I play soccer there, so I can't say that long here. But anyway, so I just want to say that's how much of an impact that all the work that you guys have been doing for years. And while I'm still a product, I actually was a runner here at San Ana. I went to Spurgeon. And then I went to Santa Ana High School. I got a full scholarship to go to Fort Worth. And then when I was in Irvine, I always saw myself coming back to Santa Ana and giving back to our community. So three, uh, four years ago, I opened up a clinic in mental health. I am actually a clinical psychologist. And my office is just around the corner right here, right next to a lot of the clean towers. And because my goal was always come back here to San Ana and give back to the community. So whether through a clinic with environmental services for youth and adults. And three years ago, I actually, I opened up a nonprofit running. I completely thought that mental health was completely very different than athletes and sports. But then I realized I can just be authentic and be myself. And that's why I started the nonprofit with the Lightning. So with the Lightning Youth Academy, we really emphasized on running and mental health. And the reason I'm not here to brag, so the reason I'm here is because about two years ago now, I think, the time flies really fast. I contacted Jennifer and then Jorge, and then they allowed me to do the running program. So we do the recreational running program. We teach kids how to run at Jerome Center. So we're there in the springtime and then in the summer as well. And I'm really happy because we get to do running and mental health. And I also want to say that this year, we're actually, this summer, we're going to be starting through my clinic, we're going to be opening up at Salgado. And also where we're just going to be focusing on mental health in Athens. And then we're going to be doing those workshops as well. So I'm really excited. But I'm also, it doesn't end there, right? Like when we're starting, I'm actually a coach right now with the boys, basketballs, volunteer coach. So that's what I mean when I say I'm a product of all the work that you guys are doing because everything that we do volunteer is for the kids. And then once again, for all the work that recreational parks are doing and Jerome Center giving, opening their doors, trusting us in providing this type of running program, I want to say thank you. How much of a difference are we making? And I say we, because it's all of us. Our kids, last year, last year we went, so we also go to a national meet. We do track meet, we do track from January to June and then from July all the way to December. And our kids, last year, what we had our San Ana first century meet in September, we had about like ten kids run number one in the nation. And then maybe like fifteen or twenty of them were at least in the, in the top twenty in the nation. And but, and I think this is kind of like a product of that. Last year, our kids, seven, eight-year-old boys got third place in the nation. And then this past year, our boys got third place in the nation and our girls got second place in the nation. So we are really making a big statement to everybody. The cool thing about it is that we're only starting. So thank you for all you do, Jerome Center. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to be, you know, to letting us, helping you in making a positive impact. Looking forward to continuing to work with others and making a positive change.
And just to add on to that, you know, last week we gave you guys our cultura. You look at our culture and you see all the little lightning bolts on it saying that is a product of his programming, the kids that thinks were very happy and they all showed up to city council last week. So, you know, very proud to have this partnership and, you know, Merrick and her team have really grown us to what it is today. So we just want, he just wanted to come by and say his thanks to you guys. Yes, Coach. They want to ask you questions.
Yes.
What are some of the things you do with like mental health and the workshops?
Yes, so for the workshop, or even with the program that we do, even at Jerome Center. Right? Like the mental health piece really comes when any athlete, even a runners, come to the finish line or before a game, what happens? They want to go to the restroom, they feel their heart rate going up, they're sweating, their performance gets affected, they do really well in practice, but in the gaming day or race time, they'll do as well. That is something called anxiety, right? I'm not going to give a workshop on anxiety right now, right? But what it is, is that what I love to see with my kids, we have like six-year-olds at the starting line doing smell the flower and blow the candle. What they're really doing, they're learning techniques and they're already learning about what we call a sympathetic nervous system, which is anxiety. Doing the breathing exercises works on the parasympathetic nervous system, which helps them to calm down. And what we hear, even for five-year-olds, they don't really know what it is, but they're really learning to bring the heart rate, which of course anxiety goes down, the more anxiety goes up, they're getting impacted by their performance. When kids learn what is happening in their body and they know how to control it, we give them tools, that's how it comes down. So when we have five-year-olds doing smell the flower, blow the candle, we have our teenagers at the starting line visualizing being in the ocean, in a calming, loving place. That's what I'm doing right now. I'm visualizing and I'm getting nervous. That's my small mental health, you know? And that's exactly kind of what it is, how it really comes to play. I explain this not just from a clinical perspective because I myself experienced anxiety. Every time we went to a state meet or I went to nationals when I was in college, even though once upon a time I was one of the best in the nation, anxiety always got me. So that's kind of what we do and how we try to generalize it. Our kids learn how to control their anxiety. So when they are speaking in front of the classroom or they are taking a test, they already know what their body is, what is happening to their body. So all they do, just, it's little kids, smell the flower, blow the candle. For our older kids, they really emphasize, right, with like opening skills, like breathe in and breathe out. Right? And also like the sound of the ocean, where breathe in and breathe out. See, maybe if he just doing those two techniques, already my heart rate went down. So that's how really people understanding the physiological perspective, the mental perspective, and giving them those tools for kids earlier can really make a huge difference. And once again, I get comments from parents and even the youth as well, how before they would get anxious when they were taking tests or speaking in front of class, and now they know how to control it. So that's a perspective about enjoying it, teaching tools and strategy in a fun, loving way, sports, and then they can generalize it out of their lives.
I don't want to, how old you are, but when did you graduate from Santa Ana High School?
Santa Ana High School graduated from two thousand and one. Yes, no, I look like twenty-one, but my body feels like twenty-one. Yes. Twenty-two maybe, right? I have some regrets.
Thank you. That's, that's very important stuff, especially with the breathing techniques and mindfulness. I think that's something in education as well, we don't teach that enough, so.
Yeah, we have some picture, right? Like we have five-year-olds at Jerome Center, like doing like this one flower, blow the candle. So I'm really excited implementing this. For all the athletes, for all the athletes, any athletes can come and, any youth athletes can come and learn more about what triggers of anxiety, but then they can learn how to manage it. Which is completely different than therapy.
So how, how would somebody in the community get connected to your program?
Through the running program, through the running program, it's the same process where maybe they're with Jerome Center, so that's specific rec, the recreational program. We also do the running club. So it's Lightning Youth Academy, which is our overall nonprofit, and then the Lightning Youth Running Club. So we practice like at Willer, Memorial Park, Memorial Park, as well as we're at Torture Park.
You said it's only around three years, has it been?
Three years. So the running club was had established before, about years ago by Coach Henry. So that's kind of how it is. We started with running, but when it came in three years ago, we wanted to make a difference into a nonprofit, so that's how we started. Where before it was more competition, where now we're really emphasizing focusing on everybody. We don't care if you're fast, you're slow, but you learn how to become, you know, learn how to set up goals, you know, for us to celebrate. Even if you start from walking to jogging, it's a big moment for us to celebrate. And then that's how we, you know, we give kids their personal goals, that they want to give them the best of the nations and we'll give them the two.
Were you running the, the day needed, the registration or they've been registered, do you have like a site that they could register?
Yes, so there were websites for Lightning Youth Academy, and then we have our website there with the registration form. So this program is really based, the only reason we collect funds is to pay the city, to pay the parks and recs. And yes, so most families register there, but we also don't want money to be a factor. There are families, my families cannot afford, especially when somebody like me has four kids, I cannot afford a hundred and fifty for six months. So we also offer scholarships where some of the families, they just help us with assistant coaches. They're all, everybody's not a business, including myself, I'm a parent of four runners, and then other parents too, our assistant coaches are also parents. So that's how we can afford it. As long as we get enough money to pay parks and recs, we will be. So but we don't want money to be a factor. All right, thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, we have Employees of the Month. Commissioner, would you like to lead the, 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 the?
First employee we like, we have Anthony Cortez, nominated by Supervisor Mary Roll Stone. Anthony is a clear play. Anthony's a team member. He can always count on him. He's truly gone above and beyond contributing to our team's success. His creativity, attention to detail, and proactive approach have made a significant impact and the results speak for themselves. Recently, he insisted on producing graphic graphics for social media content in maps and event materials. His contributions have not only enhanced our visibility and engagement online, but have also upstreamlined our event planning and communication efforts. We truly appreciate the passion we're in this work and the way you continue to strive to improve everything that you're doing. And keep up the amazing work and thanks for all you do, Maynard and Sean.
Ruby, before you start, actually this one, one of our coworkers actually here tonight, Oscar, if you could join us up here, please. You have the board.
Our Employees of the Month, Oscar Pumero. He's part of Recreation Special.
This guy.
Has joined the PRC SA community engagement team in December of two thousand twenty-two, as a part-time and administrative aide, and quickly became a designated member of the organization. After that, led into a well-known full-time role in two thousand twenty-three. Going up to San Antonio with minimal knowledge of agency programs and services, and now as a key member of our team, he actively worked to bridge any communication gaps between city and its residents through strategic digital engagement. Oscar has helped shape the direction, strategy, and marketing, social media, and public information sharing strategy for the PRC SK. Also playing a vital role in editing, producing the cultural magazine three times a year. He works collaboratively with all the different agencies to ensure the publication, flexibility, highlighting and title of our programs, services, and events. With the latest winter, spring issues, Oscar took the lead by vision, design, and concept from start to finish. With ability to work seamlessly with that, of giving, this, and, agencies, communications, and clear and engaging listening. Beyond content creation, Oscar has developed essential style guides, reference materials to help maintain consistency. His guiding books, remarking, and always about power to, with data, driving insight, so guides out, we connect with the community. His contributions will keep and ensure the same vital role he calls cultural, academic, and self-employment, built with brand beyond the road. Oscar definitely should be a community advocate, shout out, support the program, and go to multiple programs. Oscar has grown into a recreation marketing professional, and his passion for effective communication continues to benefit both agency and the San Antonio community. The effectiveness, the A to B, the ability to call the work product, makes him more eligible to be recognized from the San Antonio Department of Labor.
Hey, picture, Oscar, they want to picture with you, Mel. Got all seven, I think.
And she has been in the city for three months. She's zookeeper one. The animal care team has been working hard to get monthly weights on all zoo animals as one, and then belt monitor. This is difficult in San Antonio, particularly those living in large groups. So started working with three flight bird, a very, in January, after only a few weeks training the birds, she was able to get all of them weighed. Considering the short amount of time she had been working with these animals, the lack of the area environment and the number of birds leaving there, this is a huge accomplishment. Elder's knowledge and experience have made her a valuable asset to the better suit team. And her team is delighted to nominate her as employee of the month.
Nathan Valleco is a part-time employee. He's a program leader and has been with the city for six years. Nathan has displayed great leadership skills in all aspects of his work. He takes notable initiative and completes daily tasks without reminders. He consistently has a great attitude and is always offering exceptional customer service to not only coaches and parents, but also to your own patrons. He volunteers to train any new employee and offers them assistance whenever it is needed. His attitude is vibrant and his work ethic makes it a pleasure to have as an employee, coach, and colleague. Congratulations.
Now we won't have the Employee of the Year recognition.
So if y'all could join us up here. So look, here's what we've been doing over the past few years. We've been giving out Employee of the Months to only our, our full-times and our part-times for both Parks and Recreation and the Santa Ana Zoo, full-time and part-time. One of the great things we do is we like to honor our full-time employees for what they do, and this is someone that goes above and beyond the call of service throughout the whole year. During our youth commission, we recognized our zoo employee of the year, and she was amazing. And I know Ethan was there. And this time it's our Parks Rec term, so Ms. Cory Lance, if you could join.
So this is recognition for Employee of the Year. It is truly an honor to stand before you today, the Chairperson of Parks Recreation and Community Services Commission, to recognize an individual whose impact on our community is nothing short of extraordinary. Each year, we have the privilege as a commission of celebrating an outstanding staff member who goes above and beyond in their service to the city of San Fernando. This year, that honor belongs to Cory Lance, Community Services Supervisor of Parks Recreation and Community Services Agency. Cory's leadership, creativity, and unwavering commitment to community engagement has set a new standard for excellence in Parks and Recreation. Her innovative approach has transformed the way Parks and Recreation connects with our residents, ensuring that our programs, events, and services reach and inspire every corner of our community. Among her many accomplishments, Cory developed a department-wide cell guide, revamped the Parks and Recreation website, and launched the award-winning winning blu dura magazine. A publication that has become a vital bridge between Parks and Recreation and the residents we serve. Her strategic marketing efforts have not only strengthened the agency's identity, but also increased program participation and visibility in ways, in ways you've never seen before. Beyond her expertise in communications, Cory has been a driving force in security partnerships and sponsorships, bringing over two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in funding, collaboration with organizations like Chevy and the L.A. Clippers. Her ability to forge strong community connections has resulted in new opportunities for residents to engage with Parks and Recreation through initiatives such as naming park contests and mascot events. Her efforts beyond San Fernando, extend beyond San Fernando as well. Cory has shared her knowledge and passion with fellow professionals across the region, presenting at California Parks and Recreation Society District Ten and the Fall brochure exchange on best practices for community engagement and collaboration. Through her work, she has elevated not just our, the Parks and Recs agency, but the field of Parks and Recs as a whole. Cory's dedication, innovation, and leadership embody the spirit of public service. It is because of professionals like her that our parks, programs, and events continue to enrich the lives of our residents and bring our community together. On behalf of Parks Recreation and the Community Services Commission, it is our privilege to recognize Cory Lance as the two thousand twenty-four Employee of the Year. Congratulations, Cory.
Hey, we're not done. So again, as you guys all know, and I can give a short story, when I first started here being at that time Recreation Manager, Tim Pagano. You know, we wanted to, you know, shake up the division, we wanted to reorder, redo the department agency, something like that. And we both came up with, hey, let's take one of our, the supervisor position, and let's create a community engagement team, which would, you know, at first it started with just, you know, social media, stuff like that, but we're going to go into math and stuff like that. I still remember the day when we did the interviews like that, Tim came straight into my office and said, I found the perfect one, you got to trust me, believe it. And I believe right after that, you want to make the call, and we hired her pretty much right after interviewing. So, you know, it's a great for what you've done to this team, and again, on being from your team, you're getting twenty-five dollars in our month. And then we, as from a team, want to present you with this critical word, and you know, I'll read it to you, you know, Cory Lance. In grateful appreciation of your dedication service to the community and continuous contributions to the success of the Santa Ana Parks Recreation and Community Service Agency, we truly appreciate your hard work and your commitments.
Usually it doesn't happen this way because usually I'm given the script and I got to follow it. I got to let Cory out in the crowd going, now it's my turn. Cory, speech off script.
Yeah, but thank you all so much. I really appreciate the honor and thank you guys for being here. I know we don't always all come to the commission meeting, but it's always kind of fun to take time with you and see you in person. We're always watching from, from YouTube or from home, but thank you so much for the honor. I'm, I'm actually really embarrassed. I don't feel like it should be for me, it should be for the whole team because the cool thing about this role and this team is that we get to support the whole department and get to, to be involved in really all the programs and services that we're doing from start to finish. And then in other agencies before where everything I've done is just very tailored to the one little piece, and, and this is very exciting to be a part of something bigger on a holistic level. And our team has just been so amazing, and it's been like we just had a strategic meeting. And our team has just been so amazing. It's been like, we just did a strategic meeting a couple of weeks ago. The conversations and the ideas and the things that we're talking about for the future platforms and all the different stuff that's coming down the pipeline just makes me really excited and proud to be here and looking forward to more work ahead. So thank you so much.
Next on the agenda, we have public comments. This is the time for the commission to receive comments from the public. And we will not accept additional requests for speaker cards. We don't think they can begin the public comments section. If you have not already, please submit your request to the recording secretary. Recording secretary, our speakers will have three things to speak. For speakers on Zoom, you must dial star nine from your phone or click the button labeled raise your hand now. We need the speaker to be one of the public comments committee. Our recording secretary, do we have any public comments, public comments speakers, or speakers for public comment person?
At this time, there are no in-person speakers.
Do we have any on Zoom?
At this time, there are no Zoom speakers.
We will now close the public comments section. Next on the agenda, the consent calendar, items one and two, which I believe are minutes from the regular meeting, January 23rd, 25th, with both NHD's campuses. Do we have any members from the commission, our commissioners, commissioners, do we have any either thing we should pull from the consent calendar? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Madam Secretary, do you need to send that roll call?
Yes, motion by Commissioner Diaz, seconded by Commissioner Nelson to approve items one and two of the consent calendar. I'll now conduct a roll call vote. Commissioner Diaz.
Yes.
Commissioner Dogway. Commissioner Nelson.
Yes.
Commissioner Reyes.
Yes.
Commissioner Wu.
Yes.
Vice Chair Torres.
Yes.
Fairperson Herrera.
Yes.
The vote is seven ayes, zero nays. That motion carries.
Thank you so much. Now we will move on to the informational sections of the agenda. As we have scheduled, we have the library staff report as well as new staff report. Director Gerber, do you have any concerns with the library's staff report?
Absolutely, Chair Herrera. Good evening, members of the commission. The library has been busy in the month of February, providing a great number of programs across all of our sites and using our local field, at our time locations at Garfield, then El Salvador, as our new hope library. We're getting ready to transition and eventually, you know, come this summer, we'll also be offering services out of our new Delhi branch, which is the first, you know, branch in the Santa Ana Public Library, even though it's truly on the south end of the city. So we're really excited for that and important a lot of other projects will be happening as well. We'll have El Salvador Library, the Joel Park, coming this summer as well. So expect our new Delhi and Jerome. And then following those, those will be our new renovated refurbished U-Haul Library and a brand new, basically, A-Libery. We're really gutting the inside, giving everybody what's going to be one of the best libraries in the county of San Antonio. So we're excited for all these, excited changes for the Santa Ana Public Library. But just to give you a little bit of an update on our programs in February, we really focused this month on Black History Month celebrations. We had a number of events happening throughout the month. To begin with, on February 3rd, we had a unity bracelet craft, where members of the community were invited to come in and create one of these bracelets. They could stop by and pick one up at the reference desk, last supplies last. And then we had a counter, a campus program in honor of Black History Month. That was a fun, inspiring, artist painting program designed to help the Chinese explorer develop artistic talents. This was for all age levels. That one was on February 1st, so right at the beginning of the month. Then, of course, we had a movie, Summer of Soul, in honor of Black History Month. That was another program that was on February 25th at 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Garfield Community Center. And then we have a Black History Month celebration at our El Salvador Community Center. We had some great food and offered our team attendees an opportunity to draw amazing figures in the Black community. So we were happy and proud to present all those programs throughout February. Then, of course, throughout February, we had our winter reading programs. Don't do summer anymore, we do winters. And a lot of the times when we try to fix these reading programs, it's sort of gamify them and make them fun to participate. And the great thing about this winter reading program, which has been running long, on the New Hope, from youth up to eighth grade, you get to, you receive a free child children's meal at Pam Express for every five books that is read to a child, or five books that they are even to read. So that one has always been well. We do our In-N-Out reading challenge too, which is for the free hamburgers and cheeseburgers. So we love these types of ones. It gives us something to live for. Especially during the summer months. But it's great to have this one in the winter too, to keep, you know, all the kids engaged and comfortable in our libraries. Lastly, I gave you sort of a little bit of an overview on all of our capital projects going on at the library. But I want to make it known too that we have a webpage that is part of the library's website that you can go to at any time and update it frequently. We have pictures of construction progress. We have, we explain sort of, you know, where we're at with the project. We provide updates in terms of schedule and project timelines there. And this is really into, I feel like, to increase transparency, whatever it is, right? So we all just have these capital projects. People drive by and they wonder, what's going on? Are they, you know, where's the progress? So we put these pictures out there. You guys can see inside. And these are pictures that our inspectors take from the city. So you can see, you know, it shows the construction in action and the work that we've done. So continue to look for monthly updates. We'll have another update coming shortly for all of our projects. You won't see New Hope there yet because New Hope hasn't begun until we open up our Delhi library. So you'll start seeing the updates on New Hope for construction this summer. With that, of course, at the end of my, of the faculty here and my staff report, you will see a whole bunch of other programs that we have throughout the month of February. Too long to go through, but I'm going to answer any questions that you may have now that this is the conclusion.
Great. Do we have any questions or comments from the commission, Commissioner Dogway?
First, it looks great. It's like, I didn't know you guys were doing all this. It's very extensive and it's amazing. I have two quick ones. The first one is the Black History Month celebration. I think you said it already happened, but I see it here for Friday.
Oh, yeah, yeah. There's one, there's one last program tomorrow, Friday, February 28th. That is the one where, let's see, yeah, that's the one at El Salvador, Community Center. Yeah, absolutely.
So that one's good. And then you go over the digital pathway series, but I think it's like in your books for older adults.
Yeah. Absolutely.
And that, the New Hope.
Yes, so the digital pathway series is a program where we sort of, there are computer classes and there's sort of structure for anybody to attend. Like we offer, you know, computer classes and tech help at the senior center, start around the hour. But this is just another one to kind of, you know, help people learn how to use computers, get online, get into email, help applying for jobs, things like that. You know, even sometimes they'll bring in their personal devices and people, you know, will help them with their phones or their tablets. We really try to offer both, you know, the opportunity for that one-on-one, you know, help with tech. Because libraries are all about tech. You know, we have STE programs and STEM programs. So this is again, just another opportunity for people to come on in and get help with their, their pack or learn about, you know, a website that they're interested in accessing, or maybe it's one of the library's resources. We have a number of those that you can get on. We have lots of resources online, including things like Canopy and Hoopla, which offers free streaming music, movies, comic books. We have Comic+. And now that our main library is closed, we have a lot of usage on those, but all the way though. So these again, yeah, the digital pathway series, just another opportunity for. This one, I believe you might offer in Spanish. I can take a look definitely to get back to you. Yeah, thank you. For sure.
Do you have anything other comments with Commissioner Diaz?
I have just a quick question. I wanted to ask you, how soon do you have to place for the following events? For example, are you going to have the panel meeting?
Yes, we are. That one is busy in April, April 23rd. I believe, and you will see a lot of promotion coming out of that too. We're finalizing everything right now. So that one will be coming soon. Yeah, it's usually that, it's usually that Saturday, Saturday. It's going to be, because main library is closed, Commissioner Diaz, it's not going to be, we're not going to use the circle part anymore, but we're going to push it back a little bit and have it like around the following one up in front of City Hall. So it's still going to be in the location that it has always been. It's just going to be, we're packing a little bit more into a more compact space.
And they call it the last area?
Yeah, I, you may have something in there. My team is still working on all the final layout, but yes, it'll be through that whole area.
Okay, well, find out. We're going to have.
Absolutely, yeah.
Some events we're going to be, I was thinking, if any other thing was going to be one, no good.
Yep, yes.
Thank you so much. That was my question.
Do we have any other questions, comments, questions, Commissioner Diaz?
Yeah, I have a question on the reading program. It says use up to eighth grade. Does that mean that younger kids can also register?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's for, it's for all ages up to eighth grade. They can register. So even if they're too, they're little ones and they're too young to read, that's what it's kind of saying. Even if their parents read or an aunt or uncle or somebody reads to them, that's how they participate too. So it's literally, it's for children up to eighth grade, but you know, even if it's for little ones, yeah.
Director Gerber, I thank you for your work providing the updates on, I did see on social media right now, some of the construction updates that I think you're posting. I really like that they are providing those updates. I mean, something maybe more visualizing or, I think, the branding is so good that it kind of, which would get lost between the branding. And so like if the first, like the first, like the before and after photo is like the front photo, then it's like people can quickly like see the identification of it. So I, I like that. I would suggest kind of to do like those types of posts. I think that will kind of get folks more engaged in those posts.
Gotcha, for sure. For, thank you for the work on celebrating and highlighting Black History Month. I wanted to ask if there, I know you know so much of the national conversations around DEI and folks like taking a step back from conversations around diversity. And I wanted to ask if we have, or in the past, had like curated book lists for, like, you know.
Yeah, yeah, they should be online. It's the, yeah, they're online in Commissioner Herrera. And you can find us curated book list. And we will typically have them available with, on our website with the information for like whatever history hunt it might be. So we'll have a curated book list for AAPI. We'll have a curated book list for Black History Month. And we'll have a curated book list for Hispanic Heritage Month. So we do all of this here, for sure.
Perfect, thank you, thank you.
And we try to change them up too, you know, so it's not just the same thing every year. It's like here's the same list. We do try to change up the topics.
Great question.
Thank you. Another question that I had in relationship to the library services, capital improvement projects.
Yes.
There, I had previously made a comment or a question relating to the New Hope Library. I hadn't thought the gendered neutral restaurants or the ability to have gendered neutral restaurants. I believe you, they were still like in design phase.
Yes.
I wanted to see if you can bring the update.
Yes, they should be gender, yes, I can confirm that. Because it's, it's, because, I mean, in addition, the building is like, there's, there's just a few. So it just makes sense to, to keep these, you know, flexible and gender neutral.
That was, yeah, I mean, we have those new restaurants with city council.
Yes.
You know, so it would be the exact same. Stop. So thank you for confirming that. I think that's a, great that we're staying neutral or just, you know, making it accessible for folks. And that's the only question that I have. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, I think we have, we'll move on to our second informational report on our zoo staff report.
But a few updates around the zoo, animal wise, women, if you can leave aside it out. We are bringing back another species that we have for a few years, I think maybe more or less, that is the world's smallest monkey. And from the Amazon basin, so we have them on the loan from the Dallas World Breeding. Right now, they're, they're not on public map where you can see them, but they will be in the future. And they're quite, quite small, 150, 160 grams. So it's like half the size of it. So they can, very, very tiny. So it's, it's great to be able to, firstly, a different species of primates, especially for the anthropologists that come to the zoo and all the visitors that sort of date the zoo's heritage over the years. We also have some new Mexican box turtles that are living in expedition outposts with other big games and the furberets. And there's some other species in the works that we'll talk about in the next commission meeting. General operation wise, then December, we're able to update the playground rubber service thing. So it's nice and fresh and spongy and all the kids are enjoying the playground. Some other different projects that are in the works, the education building is going through plan check. But hopefully we can get that out for bidding in the near future. The pathway accessibility project, so that will help aid some of the pathways in front of the room. That one, that one went out to bid. And we're just finalizing the construction contracts, so that we need to under, get that underway pretty soon. Children's zoo updates and a lot of different little projects going on, like updating some of the buildings. Updating colors so it's brighter or moving on to new interpretive signage. There's a alligator exhibit coming in. So lots of different things going on there. More, more different capital projects, like the, the north end of the zoo, we have a telephone pole with fence that is from the 1970s. That's sort of falling apart. It's a little bit complicated because part of the fence process is onto Caltrans property. So we have to coordinate with them, but we're trying to get that out for bid sometime in the future. It's, it's been a little bit complicated, learning lots of different things about coordination with Caltrans, but we're getting there. It's, it's been a little bit uh complicated, learning lots of different things about uh, that coordination with Caltrans, but we're getting there. Uh, very exciting things happening at the San Diego Park Center. So that's uh, that's a center that is open uh, different days of the week right now. And we're waiting for all the new exhibits to come in, which will completely overhaul the inside of the center. Hopefully, hopefully, late spring or in the summer, they'll all be delivered, they're being fabricated by a museum design firm in Virginia. And then it should come here and then come and install them all. And received the delivery of the uh, Western pond turtle, okay, recently, so that is getting set up. And that will look sort of like a little section of the creek and a lot of water flowing through it. Uh, you'll be able to see the Western pond turtles, which is a native threatened species of cornea. Uh, and historically, we've been found in that area. Uh, so that's, that's coming along, the different programs that happen, it's nature generally, there's art programs, story, uh, story crime program, uh, lots of different things going on there. And we'll have more information as center really, really ramps up with all the new things coming. The biggest project going on with zoo, uh, represents the honors of primates. And if you come to the zoo, uh, a lot of it is looking very condition now, uh, probably good. But the main private habitat and in the honor area, that is all coming together really nicely. Uh, there's a YouTube walk crew that we built a couple of weeks ago, I'm not sure if anyone's seen that, but that should take you through and you could see things developing inside that space. Um, always looking for new volunteers at the zoo. Uh, if you know anyone that wants to get out or wants to get back to community, there's lots of different opportunities at the zoo, uh, depending what your interest is in. And lastly, I'll talk about the primary forest, uh, so the, we have, the zoo office operated by the city of Santa Ana. And then we have Friends of Santa Ana Zoo, which is a five oh one C three nonprofit, that is a partner and has been the partner of the city since the nineteen seventies, uh, raising funds for the zoo. So when we do the block type outlet at the end of the year, the friends are the one that do that. They have a membership program, some special events, and uh, support all different aspects of the zoo. And we're working together with them to really kick off the primary forest capital campaign. That's ultimately going to help really revitalize the north end of the zoo for the oldest monkeys and the czar. So that is in the works right now, uh, we've been interviewing some consultants that will help us with the apple campaign and take us through that process. And we're happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, we, Commissioner, Commissioner Neres?
Would it be possible, maybe create um, a small post in, you know, either Instagram, Facebook? And uh, I can share it with some of the high schools that, you know, the kids now, if they require eighty hours a year, right? Can say, I was for you to get sort of this student.
Yes, of course.
What's a hundred?
Yeah.
Uh, so if you create something, maybe we can, um, you know, put it away, the, the high schools, students can reach out to me.
Definitely, that's a great deal. I've got one that needs about twenty-five more hours.
Any other questions from Commissioner comments? Um, vice chair, any questions?
Do you plan on having any Earth Day events at the Eco Center? I see that you're planning on some, having one event at the zoo.
Mm-hmm, so the event we're having at the zoo is part of the planet, that's our endangered species, Earth Day event. Uh, sort of the signature event that we've done two years now, it's been very small, but hopefully grow into a much larger event, is inter, inter coastal, the Earth Day, and that usually happens, I think, it's in September, October. And that's gonna be the Eco Center, actually, bigger, big, Earth Day style event. Uh, and that's cleaning up the, the large and, and everybody will make its way out to the issue. So look for that, and we also have, uh, it's probably here, uh, this is a newer thing that's rolling out. And that is the, uh, we're putting, we're trying to develop a number of different community science uh activities. Uh, the newest one is the City Nature Challenge, which uh engages uh the community uh through iNaturalist, so it's an app uh, to document wildlife in the community. And it happens, no one really in West County is doing that, so we're trying to bring that into West County. And uh, that will need to start really soon, it is already.
Um, on, I, so I follow iNaturalist, I see that it's in, um, by the creek, you do have a lot of entries. Um, is there a specific um, place on iNaturalist you can see like projects or anything like that?
That, I'm not sure, but uh, I'd be happy to connect you with Amber and David, if you know whoever.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions?
I wanted to, um, thank you for your work, um, on operations, I know that's probably a lot better managing to kind of, um, particularly, I'm really looking forward to the Eco Center kind of opening up with uh, some of the work during the past. Um, in relationship to the community hub building, uh, will, are there restaurants anticipated for that?
There's openly two buildings, uh, that would be, the same type. So the focus of the whole that, just the link, first, it doesn't have restaurants, but the uh, the restaurants that were designed in that building are uh, let's say more modern written design, uh, they are all individually installed with a shared seat.
Okay.
And then there's also a large accessible restroom for adults or children, especially, that has like a full down bed.
So the, the, the second part, where the restaurants are included, that's not, uh, it, there's, it's not, it's, it's in the design, but there's no funding for that, yeah. To be, to be difficult. Thank you, thank you for that, it was a great job. Um, I don't have any other, um, comments, I'm looking forward to the Eco Center too. Um, okay, I think, um, we are at the end of the meeting, um, and so, uh, I want to say another, uh, now's the time for Commissioner comments, um, are there any comments, Commissioner Neres?
Yes. I just want to thank you for, um, always keeping us up to date, I really appreciate that, um, for your, you do your weekly, um, events for both library and for zoo, that helps a lot, because, and, and the various issues here, and um, and I'm happy that Sue is actually getting their, getting ahead in the different uh, projects. And also the library too, and they're looking great. I see that it's moving faster than expected in both, so I really appreciate it, but you too.
So much, Commissioner, do you have any, Commissioner comments?
It's just, it's amazing, all that, all that's been done, makes people proud to be in Santa Ana, you know, it's a city, and I think, if, you know, when I was a kid, if I had known that there was so much to do, I feel like, yeah, I could have done some of the, you know, so I think the outreach is important and the hard work that you guys are doing and that everyone does. It's, it's really important to help our community get better, so I think it's amazing, keep doing what you're doing. Uh, could you touch on the uh, the show? I, I saw that it was gonna be a feature of the zoo, it would be a feature of.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, there's a show that likes, uh, I remember, I was there when they were filming. Uh, uh, it's a travel Santa Ana, yeah, it's doing a really great job promoting the community, um, both internally and help externally, uh, in the region. I know they're, uh, it's a close state, you know, they're, they are from Mexico coming up soon. They're really friendly people, they're, they're all there as in Santa Ana. So they were able to coordinate the show, uh, which is a travel show, and they go to different cities all around the US. And they highlighted Santa Ana, they came to the zoo, uh, I know they were downtown, highlighting the uh, rollerblading and skating. Uh, they went to this uh, swamp scene, I believe, and a number of different, sort of different pictures of the community. And spent a few minutes learning about what's going on in the special there. And it should be streaming, I think, on the public platform in the future.
Then, uh, do you know if, um, that I saw that the arts commission could be there, giving something with Sawalio and Sister Cities in Santa Ana, the making mural, is that gonna be a Santa Ana park or?
I'm not quite sure where that's gonna go, I think they're still in the village, but I think, if I've heard right, it might be going downtown in somewhere downtown, last I've heard, but I can, I can look into that, I'll get back to you.
Done, alright, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Nelson?
Um, first, thank you guys, um, for the updates, and then, uh, I have a couple of things, um. Inquiring the community, you can run into people that ask questions about all kinds of things. Um, and I was inquired regarding uh, competitive sports versus rec sports in Santa Ana. So, um, just kind of want to understand what the parks and recs status is as far as distinction between the two. Is there, if they're both five oh one C threes, is there a different reservation status for competitive versus recreational?
Um, so the way the policy was ran, it was based on, you know, Santa Ana residents to use our fields. Ninety percent for recreational and then seventy percent for competitive and, uh, like that. If you'd like, on our next commission meeting, I can bring our, our um, athletics team in here to give a presentation on how it works and how we set it up. You know, so you can get a better clip, you know, maybe we can evolve our communication, how we do it. Unfortunately, we don't have enough fields to serve everyone. And unfortunately, we're in our prevalent very few cities that opens up our field to anybody and everybody, to whereas other cities, they only limit people, you know, we're a city that does have a lot of sports going on, whether it be baseball, soccer, football, um, frisbee, or people just want to use the field. And I said, our Parks Maintenance Team does a great job to, you know, make those fields, and we're always looking to add fields to our inventory. So when it comes to, and we're also very, you know, when it comes to the cost of renting fields, we're very, you know, rich, to be honest, you know, compared to other cities, you know, because we want to make it affordable to our residents first. Ultimate does happen is all these teams, like you said, you know, they start ramping in from outside and plant our fields, and then our residents start losing the ability to use our fields first. So it's kind of a balance that we try to do, but we can give you a full presentation if you'd like.
Yeah, I agree, yes, there's, you know, up until, you know, thirteen and under, there's about seventy percent where they start dropping on youth thirteen in all sports, and I think that's the time that we need to really kind of push ahead and kind of create opportunities for them. Fortunately, at that time, you kind of become more competitive, or you don't, and if we don't provide those type of activities, um, then they go to other cities and play there, and we lose out on one, having, anticipating our fields in, in our community. But I think we also, then a lot of us get stuck not anticipating, you know, so, um, yeah, that would be great. I think there's a lot to, to look in there, I mean, I know the policies are written in, in a way that we're to, to try and keep the fields for our use, and I think that's the intended purpose has been that. I'm just trying to figure out how we can make this kind of work for both competitive and youth, because many other cities are able to do that, and how, you know, it's, if it's, um, you know, just, just like to figure out what the, you know, reservation for, for recreational um, numbers are versus competitive and then how that kind of work and, and just kind of, yeah, presentation, that'd be fantastic.
Thank you so much, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Reyes, any comments?
Thank you, Commissioner Rube.
Um, I just also wanted to second with Commissioner Berlins and to give you the opportunity and, um, with your visiting, it's just phenomenal. I love learning of some of the programs, and I see a lot of benefits to seniors. And uh, it is affordable and in, in our areas, so, and also the zoo is, if I was a child, is one of the things that I'm wanting to do to do expansion that we have, and have been, which is wonderful, uh, so I'm, I'm making a day with my great granddaughter, so, I have three days. So I just want to commend you, thank you very much, uh, this is a tremendous.
Thank you.
What we're, the programming that's going on and the support that you have, and it's very, that uh, they're going to be remodeling our Flavilla Park, a garden, which I'm very happy to be here, I support the garden. And also, can you tell me when the bathrooms are gonna be done, uh?
I can get, I can get you an update on that, but again, it is going through, it's uh, with our public works team, going through all the things, money's been allocated for it, so it is in the works.
Good.
Yes, so again, that restroom, unlike the others, you know, has to, it has to stay there because all the components are in that restroom, but it's gonna be redesigned and fully upgraded to ADA and twenty twenty-five standards, so it's gonna be really nice.
Oh, yeah, also, uh, some of the residents who are, the our people, our neighbors have, um, uh, our plaques and also our canapes and stuff like that, that we would like, we can get a little area to put it in. Uh, some of us have been keeping it in our garage, but there's a transition between leadership. And uh, we were hoping that you was having suggestions that we could put it in there and share it.
We can, we, we can talk about it, you know, story.
That was brought up, asked by one of the residents because they're all changing around. And also the transition of uh, of leadership too, where there's a key community area to keep these things in the association, so.
You know, we do it for one neighborhood association, you know, all the other neighborhoods association, as you guys know, we've got, I think, sixty, six, it was sixty-four? Sixty-four neighborhoods associations, so, and we don't, right now, we're limited on the space as it is, so, but we can, we can discuss it.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you very much.
Um, vice chair, Secretary Silvers, any comments?
Um, I just wanted to thank you both for your presentations, I'm looking forward to seeing the opening of Delhi, I'm looking forward to see the Jerome Outdoor Library, as I'm seeing it um, get built and progressively get closer to finishing, I'm getting more and more excited to check it out. And I'm also looking forward to, um, seeing the primate canopy that's coming up soon, so really excited for what's coming for our residents, thank you.
Great, thank you, Vice Chair. Um, for my comments, I just wanted to, um, thank the team and, um, so happy that we have a, another employee of the year um, that's recognized. Uh, I also wanted to commend Parks and Recs for, um, the, our outreach and engagement for our commission meetings. Uh, there was the post that we had on our Parks and Recs account. So, um, that's something that we approved as a commission last year to, um, initially in twenty twenty-three, moved us into a hybrid in-person meeting. In twenty twenty-four, we adopted, um, three uh, community meetings like these ones. And this year, we are, um, incorporating an engagement plan to, uh, bring more of like community in, into our meetings for them to kind of share, um, you know, uh, how we can best improve Parks and Recs. Uh, and it's one thing to kind of, uh, do the work to bring folks here, you can take a course to one of the well or whatever, and you can't let them drink it. Um, and so I, I think we need to, uh, re-strategize how we, uh, engage the public to be able to participate, um, in our commission meetings. Um, and so we're happy to kind of think that through, you know, I know we're at the senior center and maybe having a little bit more seniors, or, you know, we have one member from the public here, um, but, uh, you know, I think, uh, we need to be, be able to do more to make sure that the public is able to attend our meetings. Um, I know folks tell me all the time to how we can improve our Parks and Recs, and I always tell them, it's best that you please show up for meetings um, to be heard, uh, and so, you know, there's a lot that Parks and Recs can do, but I also believe in the ability for the community to also participate. Um, so also, um, I had communicated with the executive director about having a budget presentation for Parks and Recs um, at our next meeting, so at our next meeting, we'll have, um, the presentation for Parks and Recs. And then also, uh, communicated with Director Sternberg about a budget presentation for the zoo, I mean, for the library. Uh, maybe he's a two, um, and, uh, so we'll have those presentations, um, and, uh, at our next meeting, as well as the following meeting. Uh, and then I also am working with Susie to, uh, to do a, um, to have a discussion on updating our city code. Uh, I did get to review our city code, and, um, you know, there's, uh, not much reference to community engagement as, uh, as it relates to the, uh, capital improvement projects. We dedicate millions of dollars to our parks, and, you know, uh, it's important for me that we have a policy, oh, yeah, as a commission. Oh, yeah, as a commission, part of our role is to oversee the budget, provide guidance on that. Um, to, um, for the city managers, also the city council, but also to make policy recommendations to the city council. And it is my hope that, um, at our, at our next meeting as well in March. There will be a discussion on, uh, how, how do we work towards a policy recommendation for community engagement as it relates to our capital. So those are my comments. Uh, Executive Director, any comments?
Yeah, just to follow up on what you're saying about the budget team. Um, the actual finance department will also join us at our next meeting. I know I haven't got an email from them, uh, required, right? Got a email? We're gonna do it, we'll do it for both. Yeah, so they're gonna be also, what we're doing for you guys, we're also doing for the youth as well too. So they'll get it first and then y'all will get it. But we'll have a budget, the budget team's going to come down as well as, uh, we will do our budget and the zoo is included with our budget. And then, uh, Director Sternberg's team will do their following meeting is their presentation. So it's not all plopped together. So that is in the works. Um, just wanted to touch on something else that we're really excited about since Ethan is here. Um, they did submit their AZA certification. The entire packet has been delivered up to Maryland. So they are currently reviewing it and then they will be coming to visit us in June. And with everything tracking as it is, we should be off. Uh, our team will be flying out to Tampa, Florida in September to officially receive our AZA certification. And that is a huge step for us as it will open up the door for more funding grants. And, you know, to be able to transfer and get animals a lot easier than what the current process is. So we're really excited for that and Ethan and his team have done a fantastic job on that. Um, also at the zoo coming soon, our Brew at the Zoo is back for our third year. So, um, Ethan's seen that, are, you know, putting that together and tickets should be going on sale really, really soon. Um, we do have a date, a set of May tenth at. On Mother's Day. So it's going to be May tenth. And it will be from, uh, six, six, five, five date. You know, so we'll be on a Saturday. And again, we've had such a great turnout, huge turnout. So we're expecting another one again. And then the following week will be our ten K, five K race here in downtown Santa Ana. We are also going to be doing it, uh, in partnership with the Public Works, uh, Public Works Safety Week. So both events will be going at the same time. We will take the morning, uh, shift, as I say, and they will take the afternoon. They've got a lot of great things on. Uh, tickets will be going on sale, our tickets, um, registration will be, well, I mean, is. We'll be going on sale, um, the seventeenth of March. Uh, just so you guys know and give a heads up, we will be charging this year for the five K and the ten K. You know, so again, it's just a way, but again, it's going to be nominal. It's going to be very much, you know. So we're just trying to, you know, balance, you know, what we do with budget and everything like that. And we, you know, felt it's time to add a little bit of fee. And also it helps us to, you know, if you do pay for a race, you are going to show up. In the past, we've had a lot of registers and a lot of them didn't show up. So then we're ordering shirts, medals. We had excess of that. So this is a way to, you know, help get them more organized. And again, like last year, the ten K did very well, had about three hundred fifty runners. And, you know, we expect a little bit more on that. And we'll be running through the, uh, downtown area around the stadium, uh, Ross Angels Park. So we've got a really great route for that. Um, other than that, um. I wanted to thank you guys for continuing to, you know, support us and advocate things for us. And, um, do want to remind you guys that we do have, it's, it is March eighth. March eighth, I put on your calendars, we're having a special meeting. You know, it's especially out at the zoo, you know, so where Ethan and his team is going to give a full tour of the zoo. It'll be a, a duo, a special dual meeting, actually, because it will be the, uh, you guys and the youth doing it together. And Ethan's team will give you an in-depth look of everything. You'll see the new construction, uh, you'll get up behind the scenes and we'll walk through the zoo. And, uh, Ethan's team will give you, uh, personal demonstrations and be a lot of fun to see what we do at the zoo. She has to keep you to help promote us. Um, as you know, our zoo is a staple for Southern California and its area. And it shows by our attendance and, you know, people showing up. If you guys do get a chance, what they're on Sunday, on the third Sunday of every month, it's jam packed. You know, Santa Ana residents show the day and, you know, what we're offering, what's coming is, it's really great. We're really happy with, uh, Ethan and his team's doing out there. So just want to make your reminder and, um.
So, Marty, what time?
Um, at three P M. Be in the afternoon toward the day and that's the time. We all. Yeah, so we'll make sure this, that's, uh, the next week. We have. It's next week, right?
Oh.
Yeah, next week.
Oh, you're right.
Yeah, sorry. Wait, it's March and Saturday. So happy March. And, um, I do know, I know Sylvia's excited for next week. Uh, we are taking our seniors, we are taking our seniors to Disneyland. So they went to. They went to be a senior. So, so a couple of weeks ago, we did take him out to senior and then this is all part of to, you know, give our seniors an experience, just like our youth. You know, and what's great about next week, taking them to Disneyland, a lot of them have never been. And so this will be a first time for them to go and, you know, just be there at the happiest place on earth. And, you know, we've got to take about, about a hundred and fifty of y'all going. So.
Yeah.
So it's, so it's an exciting time. So we're very happy. And like I said, we're here in the senior center and. I had them leave up the decorations for their Valentine. So that's why you still see that. But they will be added tomorrow, getting ready for their March sixth, Saint Patrick's Day. And then last but not least, um, I want to make sure you guys, I know the time is really weird for next week on Tuesday. But we're going to be opening up our George Upton All Access Area. That was requested by our council to have it at that time due to schedule conflicts. It's a huge project out there and we've done a lot. Uh, we've added a brand new playground, which is all abilities, all access. It's amazing. Uh, we have resurfaced the basketball court and more importantly, we've got restaurants, uh, new restaurants out there. And last but not least, uh, we added lighting out to the area of the park. So people will be able to enjoy the playground till ten P M as well as the basketball court. And I had added some additional security line out there, both in the parking lot as well as in the George Upton access area. So if you guys get a chance to come out there, please do. It's at ten A M on, uh, March fourth, which is Tuesday. And then my last thing I want to, I'm very proud of what the team did is if you guys have not had a chance to go by the Jerome Center to see the mural. It is gorgeous. It is beautiful. We had over a hundred and fifty pieces put together into one. And you go up there and you see Mickey Mouse ears, L A Dodger logo. Um, I know one of our guys that's also from my hotel pass up at the Star in the Mountain. But they're all given a little title to draw something home with them using their certain colors. And then they're all put together in one big piece, which has a big old tree with roots and trees on its sides. I know Ruby, you've seen it. So if you guys get a chance, go check it out. Um, it is one of the only ones in California. Uh, this group goes around and it's a very limited thing. So we're very excited. And we're also excited for Brian's project there at Jerome, uh, Park. It is getting closer and closer. If you guys drive by, if you guys drive by there, you see it coming together. So we're hopefully getting that open very soon and we'll probably have a. Maybe do a walk through out there with you guys and check it out. We got, you know, we'll have the library out there. We also have the garden, you know, out there that, you know, does really well. And what's so special with that garden is last year during our man got the day, we had, um, help from our carpenters to help us build all the boxes out there. So it's turned into a beautiful garden. We're going to add an outdoor library and then you add the, you know, baseball fields out there. The, the senior center, the gym like that, it's turned into a really nice park. Um, other than that, that's all I got. Sorry, I was a little winded on that. But, you know, again, thank you all for your support and like I said, we hope to see you on March eighth out for the zoo and tour. Yes.
I got one question. So on Bristol, we talked about there's going to be some pocket parks for things. Living or parks today. Has that started? Cause they've kind of redone a bunch of fencing and.
The fencing, just to give it a nice look, but again, we're still trying to acquire the funding. We do have some funding for it, but there are going to be some little pocket parks throughout that. So.
So not necessarily where the fencing is, doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to be a part of that.
It's, again, it's, it's more like, like, so we didn't hit the flowers, you know, give it a nice look, you know, we put some fencing. But the fencing will be apartment, you know, just for a security issue.
Yeah.
But again, when the full park is designed, it may or may come out whatever would land on.
Well, the neighbors are all wired up because they see something good happening in their life.
Yeah, no, there, there are plans to make some really nice pocket parks out there that have exercise equipments, basketball or some type of sport core, walking trails. So, you know, it's going to be a really nice project, but as you guys know, it all takes funding and. You know, like I said, it's, you know, coming up budget season and we always ask our public to make sure their voice is heard. And I know you've said it a number of times, we need our public to go to council and, you know, and be selfish here and cheer for parks. Hey, we want parks. Hey, we want this. And, you know, it's going to be a tough fiscal year, but, you know, we've got a great city management team that can lead us. And, you know, we've got, you know, go from there. But again, it takes our residents that want to be a part of it as well too. Alright, that's all. I have commish, uh, chair. Sorry.
Yeah. And I also, um, for the, uh, March eighth meeting, is that something that, um, the public actually? This special meeting?
Yes.
Will be available to tour the zoo. Well, or.
We, we will want to try to do a special close meeting for you guys. We want our, uh, just you guys to see it. You know, cause the public can come the third Sunday and, you know, the stuff like that. Cause I guess y'all are going to get a real in-depth thing like that. A lot of things the public wouldn't see because of, you know, rules, regulations and stuff, policies.
Okay, cool. I just wanted to clarify. So, uh, thank you so much, Executive Director. Um, the next Parks Recreation and Community Services Commission meeting is scheduled for, um, we have a special meeting on March eighth at three P M. But for, uh, the large, our regular scheduled meeting is scheduled for Thursday, March twenty seventh at the council chambers at five thirty. Uh, before the commission, I hereby adjourn the meeting at six fifty six P M.